Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good, how are you Nancy?
Very warm.
A little too much.
A little bit, a little bit. About five degrees, a little less would be fine. Glad to see it, I mean it's glad to have a weekend, a Memorial Day weekend, it's gonna be beautiful.
Yeah.
You know, we don't usually get those, and then there's gonna be a parade here in Searsmont.
I've heard.
And it could be, it's normally pretty chilly, so this year it's gonna be quite pleasant.
Very nice, good.
So you're still in your basement?
Well, we're upstairs living, but the computer system-ish, all this foolishness is in the basement, yes.
Yeah.
But eye joy showing overhead, which is kinda, and some plumbing, you know, it kinda
Yes.
Adds a little character to the place.
Yes, well, I'm at the, I'm at the office here in Searsmont, because I figure we're gonna have heavy winds and thunderstorms, and that automatically brings down the internet service where I am, so.
Who do you have, who do you have for internet over there?
It's consolidated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I've had them out three times this year, and we're eighteen thousand feet from the mother station on Muzzy Ridge Road here in Searsmont.
Yeah.
And he said in the summertime, all these lines relax, and there's more square footage, or more feet. In the wintertime, the lines contract, so I have better service in the wintertime than I do in the summer.
Weird.
Plus I have competition on Pond Road, you know, everybody's on this time of night.
I think everybody's on all over the place.
Yes, what else, you know?
Very true.
Yes.
Yeah, we finally got siding on our house, so now it doesn't look red anymore, now it's actually a different color, which is unique, we almost couldn't find our way home the other day, so. Most of all the time.
What color did you?
It's blue, it's a, they call it bayou blue, it's a vinyl, you know,
Yes.
vinyl siding, but it's kind of a darker gray-blue, it's not too ugly, and white trim, again.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, Scott will be here in just like two minutes.
Okey-dokey.
These are
I brought up for him.
There she is.
Hello Elizabeth. You're muted.
There we go.
There.
Good evening.
Good evening, so you guys were, you were talking and I interrupted.
No, we were just
We were just talking about Dick's house.
Gabbing, 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 you know, just gabbing.
Is it coming along?
Yeah, we're gaining, we got siding on finally, so it's not red zip sheathing anymore. We got siding and trim on it, which it almost looks done, it's not, but it almost looks it from the outside.
Aren't you just almost right across the street from the town office?
Uh, we're down about a half, maybe a quarter of a mile on the right-hand side, so, not very far away, I can walk to the office very easily. If you ever move up to the office, I'm handy.
Dave is on, Frank is on, okay. I want one of those pictures in my background, and I can't figure out how to make it happen.
Ask Scott.
No, ask Risa.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No anything about that. And I'm not sure I can remember how to do it, I'd have to play around again.
You ask Dave, and he tells you that if you go down to your little start video,
Uh-huh.
should be a little up arrow next to it.
Okay.
Click on the up arrow, and then you can do virtual background or video settings, and
Great.
Choose a virtual background should allow you to put some pictures in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've looked online, and they tell me to go places that I cannot find on my computer, I don't know if having an Apple makes the difference, but I'll try that, thanks very much. Hi Jay. Can he hear us, see us?
Come back here. Eli, get down.
I scared a bit too much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi.
Is Jay on, can he hear us yet? Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. We said hi earlier, but you didn't respond, I thought you were just still meditating.
Well, the phone was ringing, so I put it on mute. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Can anybody hear me out there?
Hi Bill, yes, we hear you.
Good, thanks.
You're in a very official-looking place Nancy, is that, that can't be home.
No, I was just telling Dick that we're expecting some thunderstorms and some heavy wind, which automatically wipes my internet service down at the lake, so I'm here at the office. I was issued a special key, so I decided I better come.
I was hoping you'd keep all those official-looking manuals in your house, that was
No, I think Chuck would revolt.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got seven o'clock.
Alrighty.
So, get the show on the road. Welcome, I'm Elizabeth Udi, and I call to order this meeting of the Lincolnville Planning Board, today is Wednesday, May 26, 2021, and it is seven. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Zoom and can be watched live through the Zoom app or through Cable Channel 22. Information on how to access live meetings can be found on the town website. Public can submit comments by email at the town office, received no later than 2:00 PM the day before the meeting. Recordings of previous meetings may be reviewed through the link found on the town website. The planning board meets twice a month, on the second and last Wednesdays of the month, and all agendas, meeting minutes, schedules can be found on the website. At this time, we'll do roll call for board members and staff, and start with, oops, where'd he go? Was Sandy ever here? No?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Dick?
Dick from Yulin, 380 Hope Road.
Thank you.
Scott Harrison, Lincolnville.
Jay?
Jay Foster, alternate.
And Bill?
Bill Norfleet, alternate.
Thank you. According to the bylaws, we only need three to be a quorum. I'm still a bit confused about, can we just leave it at that, or is it all right to ask Jay and Bill to be voting members this evening?
Quorum means you could have an official meeting. So if you have two members of the board, that's not a quorum. If you have two members and two alternates, and you appoint as chairman both alternates, now you have four sitting members, and you therefore have a quorum.
Okay. And is it okay to appoint both of you, and we have five?
That's up to you.
Okay, I would like to do that, if not, no one objects.
Good.
Okay, so both Jay and Bill are voting members this evening. Absent are Janice K. and Sandy Della Noe, for the record. Let's see, okay, I think tonight we're going to try to remember to be recognized before we speak. It would help a lot, I think, doing this by Zoom, it's very difficult to tell when someone else is trying to talk at the same time you are. So if we could try to be a little more cognizant of that, we might waste a little less time. Let's see, okay, I'm sorry, page two. On the agenda tonight are two applications. One is a re, final review of a commercial application, and one is, I'm sorry. Frank, are you muted? Were you trying to say something?
No, he's muted.
He's muted, can you hear us? Dave, am I to continue?
David's muted too.
Oh no, I'm here and listening.
Okay.
Frank is muted.
Yeah, I've been muting because I have a couple of German Shepherds that are making a lot of background noise, sorry.
All right, thank you. Okay, a final review of a commercial application and a renovation expansion of a non-conforming shoreline camp. Review of the minutes of May 12th, we will do after we've addressed the two applications. We're gonna do this a little differently tonight, we are not having a public meeting, however, we are going to set aside fifteen to twenty minutes to let some members of the public make some comments. And we'll get to more details about that in just a minute. I've got some information I want to convey before we get there. I'd like to remind everyone listening, including all the people out there who are interested in specifically one of the applications, that the responsibility of the planning board in reviewing commercial applications is to evaluate the submitted material and determine if the proposed commercial commercial use meets or satisfies the standards set forth in the Lincolnville Land Use Ordinance. These ordinance are available for all of you to read on the website, the town website. Board members must, in deciding to approve or disapprove of a proposal, do so objectively and without bias, focusing only on the standards and the ordinances, personal feelings or philosophies of board members or community members on any given issue, ideally should play no role in the decision-making. At the same time, we're not here to evaluate or judge the applicants. Once we determine an applicant has standing and is within his or her rights to submit an application pertaining to any specific plot of land in Lincolnville, then we must proceed in looking at the application only, and how it complies with the ordinances, whether reviewing the expansion of a non-conforming structure or a proposed new sub-division, or an amendment to a commercial site. It is the application, not the applicant, that we are to review. So first up tonight is a commercial site plan, this is the Garo Arman, 55 Ensickle Road, map 32, lot 122. The applicant wishes to use two rooms in an existing building on his farm property to open a guns and gun sales business. This would be sales of high-end bespoke or custom weapons, limited hours, at first by appointment only, and probably only several customers per month. We have a complete submission packet, as was determined at our last meeting, and we now have all the necessary US Postal Service certified mail receipts. These verify that the abutter letters were delivered to the addresses provided, and the certified letters are the device required by our town ordinance. Signature receipts are not required, so we did get them all back, and they are in order. We will review this application using the Commercial Site Plan Review Section 18 of the Land Use Ordnances, subsections 11, which is standards and criteria, 12, which is neighborhood, what, neighbor, good neighbor policies, and 13, which is design standards. And are both Dr. Arman and Amber going to be with us tonight, David?
I have no idea, I think we sent the invite to Amber.
Okay.
Amber's gonna be representing the applicant.
Okay, so Dr. Arman's colleague Amber Hansen will be presenting this evening and answering questions.
Correct.
The planning board did previously review this application and approve it. It was appealed, and the Board of Appeals sent it back to us to re-review. The error that prompted that appeal was a mistake made regarding protocols and procedure. It was entirely the fault of me and the board, so, just wanted to get that out there, so we are, we're back here to re-review. As there appears to be a great deal of interest in this particular case, I want to make just two comments regarding some of the questions that are going around, these questions have been asked and answered in the past, and I'll just remind you of those. A lot of concern about the shooting range on the property, that shooting range has been there for many, many years, and is for personal use, and we have been assured that the range has no role in the proposed business and is not easily accessible, and clients will not be using the range or trying out those weapons. The neighbors should notice no significant increase in the use of that range. And the second one is the nature of the business and the types and sizes of weapons being sold. The board must assess this proposal as it relates to the land use ordinances. Lincolnville has no ordinance specific to gun control, however, many businesses like nail salons, restaurants, gas stations, liquor stores have to be permitted or licensed by a county, state, or federal entity, and in this case, that is the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives. So the ATF will be taking on those concerns. The applicant has already started his application process with the ATF, and as I understand it, they require approval by the town before they can complete the process. So, where am I in this? If anybody's concerned or curious about what the ATF requires in their applications, that can be found on www.atf.gov. During the comment session, before I go on to the comment session, do we have any questions yet from the board? Is everything pretty clear so far? Okay. During the comment session, those who are invited to speak, we request you limit your comments to about three minutes. This will not be a Q&amp;A, this is not a debate, it is not a dialogue. You will be allowed to speak uninterrupted, and I will make notes as to the questions or specific things you'd like addressed. At the end of the twenty minutes, then I will propose those questions to whomever it's appropriate, whether that's Frank or Amber. I request everyone to introduce themselves and give their Lincolnville I request everyone to introduce themselves and give their Lincolnville address. And of course, I expect everyone to be very respectful and concise and stay on topic. And if at any point we feel that. A speaker is being inappropriate or getting in. Off topic. We will ask Dave Kenny to please mute and remove them. So. After the 20 minutes and the questions are answered satisfactorily, we will proceed with the final review. So Dave, I guess we're ready. What's next? I think we want to start with Susan Silvario, does Amber want to be on camera for the comment section? Or would she like to stay in the background?
Make that your call.
If I were in her shoes, I'd just soon stay invisible and observe.
Bringing Susan over to the screen and if Amber wants to be, if she could use a little raise hand feature. We'll watch.
Hi Susan, welcome, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. And we are ready for your comments and presentation.
Well, the question that I sent to the planning board, thank you for listening, is really, really? Will you allow the town of Lincolnville to become a destination for out-of-state? Traffickers in high-end military-grade weaponry? My next question is. Will, do the neighbors have no defense against the increased lighting? And sound? Do we have no ordinances? And is a firing range of this caliber allowed in our residential area? Thank you.
That's it?
That's all.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, so who else is hoping to be heard this evening? Hopefully Frank's not talking to us because his mouth is moving, but I can't hear him.
I see a genie's hand up on the attendees, shall I promoter?
Yes, please, thank you.
If others in the attendees wanted to use the raise hand feature, this would move a little quicker, we'll just do it the time as we go down the list.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, um, thank you for taking comments, I appreciate the opportunity. I'd, I'd like to ask a question if perhaps this property is not in compliance currently with our land use ordinance. I, the way I read the ordinance is that. One of the triggers for site plan review. The, the one that brings him here tonight is number C, the conversion of an existing building. But number D is the establishment of a new non-residential use. And it goes on to say, including uses such as gravel pits, golf courses and other non-structural residential uses. And I would like to propose that the shooting range is in that category. And should have been reviewed when it was established as a new non-residential use. I would think that if that turns out to be the case, that you couldn't approve this application. Unless the property came into compliance.
Okay. Thank you for your comment and we will address that after we've listened to everyone.
Thank you.
You have genie?
Pardon?
That's it for you, you done?
Yes, unless anybody has any questions, then I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Don't see any others in the.
Okay, very good. Um. So I guess now we'll bring over Amber, but should I ask Frank first about specifics on genie's questions? I know that. As the shooting range has no bearing on the commercial gun business. Then it can't be considered in our decision. But I understand her point, so I'm going to let Frank speak to that.
Well, from the very beginning, when we first reviewed it, it reviewed this. Mr. Arman was quite adamant that the shooting range is not, will not be used in this business. And the fact that it is used, anyone could put a shooting range in their own personal property if they so desired. So I would believe that that is not a concern of the planning board. It has nothing to do with the review of the applicant according to the town's.
Okay. Is the board satisfied with that answer? Any questions for Frank?
I agree.
I agree.
Also, as I understand it, a farm is not already considered. It's a commercial farm, but it didn't have a commercial site plan. So we're not triggering amendments to an original commercial site. And I. Don't know where else to go with that right now.
Fine, what we're reviewing this is a, a site for this application. This is the commercial site you're reviewing it for, commercial site plan review.
Agree.
Okay. And is Amber available for us?
Momentarily.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Amber, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you very much. I think before we go on to specific questions addressed to you, I would like to comment on. In my, I don't know, I hate to use the word opinion. On Susan's question about, are we really going to allow out-of-state, high-end. Weaponry clients to come in here and she made specific reference to the type of weaponry. I have to go back again to what I said earlier. The type of weaponry, if approved by the ATF, is not the concern of us as we review this application. We, and if. If it should be the concern of us or the town in general, then we need more people to join committees and boards. And move toward changing your ordinances, but as I feel right now is this is. Not pertinent to our review and what we have to do tonight. And I could be wrong, so all you guys need to throw in there. As far as the lighting. I will have, we'll have to direct that to Amber. Originally, when we met in November and December, it was implied when we went through the ordinances. That there would be no changes in the lighting. So we have to ask that question, has something changed about lighting, has that been increased, is it more intense? Et cetera. Okay, so Amber, have anything to say?
So I think, I, my understanding is that Garo did upgrades on his property in general to make sure that it was more secure on the lighting aspect. And to make sure that no lights were dimmed.
Okay.
And just, and, and in general, you know, one of the things that, you know, I think Garo is very particular about is to make sure that people are safe. And so, you know, throughout the winter months particularly, it gets darker out, so it's one of those things where we want to make sure that. People in general, like are, you know, don't trip or fall or.
And do you have timers? We in Lincolnville kind of like our ambient darkness at night.
I know. No, I understand, uh, nothing, nothing in the lighting would, would trigger anything and, and part of, part of it was just to. Make sure that, you know, everything was according to what it need to be for any property, so.
In our review of the standards, when it would come to lighting under most cases. If it were pertinent to the commercial business, we would be asking about. Put it lights and down lighting as opposed to up lighting, so.
It's not. So as it relates, I mean, obviously he has a residential property as well. And so with that, you know, if he increases the lighting for his residential property, that would, you know. The, where the site is located is inside, um, is inside the barn area where the.
The shop will be.
Yes.
Okay.
And I mean barn areas and there's no light animals there, barn area. Just the structure itself.
Okay, well, we'll have to go through the standards again tonight and we'll get more specific maybe when that comes up. So board members, any questions, any comments, or do we move on?
We, we won't be covering the standards tonight, correct?
And why not?
Because we haven't found it complete yet.
We did that last meeting.
Okay.
Am I mistaken? I thought we found the submissions complete.
The first time we reviewed this and approved it, they obviously were complete.
But we also discussed that at the meeting on the 12th.
Right, so we're going by the very first meeting that we found it complete?
I was under the impression, since we were kind of in a resubmission. That we found it complete on the 12th of May, our last meeting two weeks ago. And no, am I remembering incorrectly?
Is that everybody else's remembrance?
I guess the question, I have a question to ask, has the submissions changed from what they were in the beginning?
No, and we did go through all of that. Commercial site plan exhibits, reference section 1818, we have the minutes from last time. We went through 11. On the, on the 12th, we went through 11. And where am I, 92? Through all of 11. Which is. Standards and protocols, isn't it?
Standards and criteria, yes.
Standards and criteria.
And, sorry, Amber, can I speak for a second?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, so the only thing that I, when the appeals board had met, the only thing I was aware of that anything was based upon the appeals was just on the butter letters themselves. And since that's now been, that's now been sufficed for the appeals board, wouldn't it go back to the original application then?
I think that's the decision, no? Okay, that's what I was going to ask Jay.
We, we read the appeals board decision.
And I, I was mistaken about May 12th, I'm sorry Jay, that was a different case. You were the facilitator. The last time we met with Amber. And you discussed mostly certified letter receipts.
We got as far in that meeting as I recall, and I believe the minutes reflect that. As far as six point. I'm sorry. 7.3. B. That was the application, she'll give written notice of date, time and place. When I asked a question to the CEO, did the town receive those? The answer was no. And everything stopped right there.
Well, my understanding based upon the last meeting is part of the issue was that you wanted the read receipts, which are no longer required according to the ordinance.
So what kind of receipt?
If everybody is in agreement that the receipts under 7.3B have been complied with. As well as the notification of the town administrator, the fire chief, the police chief, and we also have the fee. Then the planning board at this point can continue on looking at the submission requirements and making sure that we have everything we need to review. The application. We, we said at the beginning of that meeting that because of the appeals for decision, we were going to re-review the application. We've re-received the application. All of the requirements for the planning board have been met by the town office, the fee, the announcement. To the butters and the five, and people within 500 feet and also the notice of the pending application to all of the towns. So now the planning board can continue on and review the submission requirements. Under section, was it eight? And then continue on with the review. We also talked at that meeting about having a sidewalk, which I believe was voted no on, I'd have to look at the minutes of that to make sure. And I also mentioned that we, there's nothing in the commercial site plan ordinance that requires a public hearing. But that we had in the past had public hearings because of public interest in the application. That was discussed and I, I was under the impression. That at this meeting, we were going to establish whether or not to have a public hearing. I don't see it on the agenda, so. I had assumed that we were going to be discussing at this meeting, but apparently not.
Okay. So we're not, we have to decide if. I understand what Jay is saying now that I've got unconfused about May 12th. If we were to go through the submission requirements tonight. Then we would have to meet again to do the final review.
That's, that's by the ordinance anyway.
Yes, and I think the question is.
Combine us with clean, at the next meeting, you take up the standards.
Okay.
So it requires two meetings to do that, no matter what, you know, we do.
And part of the question is. The meeting that we had in December, when we found the submissions complete. We can't use that?
That's, that's a point for discussion, I, I would take that up with the. I don't know who I'd take it up with, maybe possibly the town attorney, if there was a, if there was a complete review of the ordinance and under the standards. Completely done by the ordinance and a decision was made. And then that decision was overturned by the appeals board. And remanded back to the planning board, if the planning board decides as a result of that decision to re-review the application. Then in my mind, we start at point A and proceed to point Z. If we want to take up just the point that the appeals board remanded it back to the planning board for. Then we're dealing with something different. So that, that's an open question in my mind as to whether or not we can use. The record of the very first meeting, which was appealed and overturned and remanded back to the planning board. If we can use all that information was submitted then as the submission requirements for this application. I, you know, I guess we're okay to proceed, but to me, that's questionable.
The, my recollection of, of, of this is that, is that at the last meeting discussing the, this application. The board decided to, in sort of a belts and suspenders approach to re-evaluate the proposal from, from square one. And then in, in the process of beginning, in, in, in beginning to do that, we realized that actually. The notification of the butters was still, was still not complete.
Complete.
And so we kind of froze. Now, the question is, can, when we unfreeze, can we proceed from where we were when we froze, or do we sort of start all over again?
That is the question, and that is what the board needs to discuss and vote upon.
I, I think Bill's exactly right. He's, he's, he is explaining exactly what happened at the last meeting.
For nine plus cash.
I don't know where that's coming from.
Okay. Bill is absolutely right, we at the last meeting proceeded through the ordinance from the beginning. And had a discussion at the very beginning about what we should do about the appeals board decision. And the board decided.
So it's just two people, no, over no.
Dave, do we know who's talking in the background there?
I hate to tell you this, but it sounds like Lisa to me.
Who?
Lisa.
Scott's wife.
Scott's wife.
I think we decided at that meeting that the appeals board decision remanded it back to the planning board, um, and that we um thought it best to re-review the application. Not just take the nebulous wording from the planning, from the appeals board and, and try to correct that particular problem. The planning, that the, the problem with the planning board, with, the problem with the appeals board decision was that it wasn't a planning board decision, it was the non-notification of the butters and people within five hundred feet.
Right.
The list that the town office had received was not complete from the applicant, it didn't list all the people. That was the problem. What we did procedurally was correct, but we proceeded under the assumption that those people had been notified of the very first meeting at which the application was gonna be taken up, and some of those people who were within either a butters or five hundred feet had not been notified. So in the eyes of the appeals board, that nullified our decision, probably a correct decision. In remanding it back to the planning board, we thought it best to go ahead and re-review the whole entire application because of public interest in the issue.
Okay.
And that was the discussion at the meeting, uh, having to do with the public hearing. You know, we don't require it in the, in the ordinance, but we have a history as a planning board of doing commercial site plan and public hearings because there was public interest. In this particular instance, there was public interest. So we discussed that that was something that uh would have to come up at this meeting, because at the last meeting, we only got as far as seven point three B. We got no further, because when the question was asked by the board, have all of the butters and people within five hundred feet of the um property been a um been asked or been advised, the answer was no. So we couldn't proceed any further. That apparently now has been clarified. Uh, yeah, if we accept the fact that the receipts that we received in our packages represent all of your butters and everybody within five hundred feet of their property, has everybody had it being notified, and that we are taking up that application now, and those people are, have the ability now to listen or whatever their view or whatever they're doing, that we can proceed past seven point three B and continue on, which leads us to submission requirements.
Okay.
That's, that's how I interpret what went on.
We need a motion and a vote. Because, on what, he says, on, do we want to do it as Jay's interpreting it and Bill, that we start at seven point three C and move on from there and then go through the submission requirements, um, section ten? We know that, well, anyway. Or a motion and a vote, or do we just go for it? I don't know, because.
If, if we're, if we're in the midst of the process that we started at the last meeting where we took up this application and got as far as seven point three B, then if seven point three B has now been complied with, um, and we have the record in our packages, then I would recommend that we just simply continue on from that point um as the ordinance guides us through the process.
Okay.
And it says that we can go from here, after all, the remaining uh submissions have been complied with, that we take up the submission requirement section and see that everything we need is there in the package, and then we set it up for an agenda on the next meeting to review it under the standards of the ordinance.
And that would be the final review?
That would be the final review. And I believe, this is a, this was classified last meeting as a minor project.
Yes.
So we only do the minor submissions and we have thirty days from then to do the, the standards.
Okay, where's my, there's. So we'll begin quickly as possible through seven point C, seven point three C, the town clerk shall provide notice of pending application that has been done.
I have a question.
I'm sorry?
I have a question.
Yes.
On, on this topic. And, and just, that, we, it, the package includes a uh list of um of the butters and residents in, in handwritten script, and there are, uh, I forget how many there are exactly. And following that, there is an email message from Amber, uh, Frank uh regarding John Pittman. And John Pittman is not in the list of butters, but we have a certified mail receipt from him, is he in a, in a butter?
Frank, is Mr. Pittman on a butter?
It was so close that we, we decided that she should send with him as well. I mean, it was using a compass, it was just a, it was like a distance away, so we said be on the same side, let's send them as, as well.
Maybe it's a good idea to, to ask that the um, that the applicant include John Pittman in the list of uh butters and residents?
Yeah, the reason that she did not do that is she had already given us the full package way ahead of time where she was supposed to. And at that point in time, we discussed it, but the package is already, had already been delivered, that's why it's not on there. They were notified.
Okay, they were notified, it's just not on this list.
That's correct.
So as far as anybody knows, we have, uh, we have fulfilled the uh requirement for notification of a butters.
I would say yes.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
It should be noted, um, Elizabeth and, and Bill, that there's, there's requirements for notification of a butters and property owners within five hundred feet of the property for um and um the first meeting at which the application is taken up. That's a responsibility of the applicant and a responsibility to the town office to make sure that that's been done, as well as the fee and the announcement to the police chief there. And there's also a requirement in the submission requirements for a list of property owners within five hundred feet and a butters, and that's to go on the plan. Those should reflect each other. There shouldn't be a list of people who were advised of the meeting and be different from the list of the butters and property owners within five hundred feet that's listed on the plan, which is registered to the town office, that should be the same. So to Bill's point, uh, if Mr. Pittman isn't on the list of people who were notified of the meeting, uh, he, he at a minimum, and although we see there his evidence of that now, at a minimum, he should be on the list of butters and people within five hundred feet property owners on the list that goes on the plan.
On the plan.
That's two separate requirements of the ordinance.
Okay. So we are, go ahead, Amber.
So this is Amber, so Frank, can you interject please on this? Because I would hate for this application to now not be able to move forward because of that list in the application, because I wasn't notified of Mr. Pittman, I, I had double-checked with the town multiple times on the butters, and I wasn't notified of him until after everything had been sent in, and I coordinated with the town of what I should do moving forward, and this was the advice I got from the town.
Well, it is, it is still moving forward, Amber.
Okay.
And we can add Mr. Pittman to the list that goes on the plan, as Jay has suggested, right?
Okay.
Okay, seven point three D. Uh, a receipt to the applicant at the first meeting and um E, within thirty days of receipt, a formal site plan review application for minor projects will be what, um, scheduled, so now that will be for two weeks from tonight? This is all new to me, you guys have to throw yourselves in here and help me out.
I agree.
Um, F is if the application is determined to be incomplete, or we don't know yet. G, the planning board may hold an onsite inspection to the site to review existing conditions, so uh Jay referred to that. That, is this the point at which you would vote to do a site visit?
We'd have to check the minutes of that meeting, I thought. We, the question was asked whether or not a sidewalk was needed and the answer was no, we, we voted on that, but I would want clarification on that before we proceed.
Okay.
It was during that same discussion, we had a discussion about the public hearing, that, that part I do remember, so.
So you've got a little further than the seven point three B?
Oh yeah. Yeah, we, we, we actually, we actually, because of the submission requirement uh waiver clauses there outlined on the ordinance, we actually took up the waiver uh portion of that that is allowed by the planning board to waive and, and delineated the items in the submission requirements that we thought were not gonna be required for this application to be reviewed. And there's, there should be a list of those in the um, in the minutes of that meeting. Uh, as far as officially going forward, we were stopped from reviewing the application because of seven point three, non-compliance with seven point three B.
So at which point do you think we're supposed to pick this up tonight?
I think we're doing fine.
Okay. So we're gonna stick with the thought that we do not need to do a site visit?
I believe that was the vote, I, I, you can, you can pull the board on that, is what their remembrance was, but, or even ask the question, do we think we need a site re, uh, walk?
And that, that was the vote, that we did not need.
Did not need, okay. I wasn't here that evening, but I would agree.
I agree.
So the planning board may require the applicant, applicant to undergo any, undertake any study, which it deems reasonable. I don't think you guys decided on anything like that, I did review that meeting. The planning board may require an expert consultant, you did not find that necessary. As soon as the board determines that the application is complete, the board should notify the applicant in writing of this below and shall place the item on the agenda for a substantive review within thirty days of this finding. Planning board shall take final action on said application within thirty days for minor projects. In issuing its decision, shall make written findings and of fact establishing that the proposed development requirements of the town. Planning board shall notify the applicant, et cetera. Town officials shall have the access, see, I'm, I'm really confused why we're, I'm doing this. Um, then you go on to section eight, you actually go through each one of these?
That's, that's really the final approval, which we're not at yet.
Okay.
This is really basically outlining the whole entire procedure we should be following.
Right.
We review something under the uh commercial site plan review ordinance, that's what it's basically doing, so.
And you always go through all these one by one during the meeting?
Not necessarily, because we should know the procedure.
Right, okay. So now we're to move on to submission requirements.
Uh, the fee has been paid, I assume.
Yes.
Okay, then we go, then we're at submission requirements.
All right, submission requirements, section ten. Applications for site plan review must contain the following, a fully executed and signed copy of an application, we have that. Evidence of payment, we have that, the nine copies of written materials plus nine sets of maps, drawing. We all have that. The waiver of submissions requirements, and as I as our colleague did not.
Yeah, the record, the minutes of the last meeting should reflect, and I can, I can reiterate that, but the minutes of the last meeting should reflect what the board took up and decided under ten point one A to waive requirements of the applicant to submit to the board for review. And I'm sure Nancy can produce that too, it was just towards ten point two, I think it was D, uh, J, um, ten point three A, this is quite a, quite a list, but those were items that we decided did not need to be submitted to the board on this ten point one, uh, ten point two and ten point three um for review. In other words, we could review this whole application without those submission requirements that were listed, because they really weren't pertinent to the application.
But I think we found all of that complete in the first place back in November, didn't we?
That's the meeting back in December, that's the open question, if we wanna go by that meeting and use those submission, you know, if somebody clears that up, then yeah, we could probably do that.
I, I apologize, I'm rather confused. Uh, ten point three existing conditions, just the classifications, we have that, the bearings length of all property lines and developed and the source, the information, we have location and size of existing sewer water mains, culverts and drains, and I'm sorry, didn't review the plaits again from last time, but I believe everything was very complete in the original application. Lots of photos and maps, location names and present widths of existing public or private streets. If applicable, it was there, I don't know that all of that was really applicable. Location and dimensions of ground floor elevations of all existing buildings, we didn't really have ground floor elevations, and we did discuss that originally, but decided that it was though just the one building that was of concern. And we did have a map with that uh laid out. The location and dimensions of ground, okay, uh, existing driveways, parking, all of that was in the packet. Location of intersecting roads and driveways in the packet, location of open drainage courses, wetlands, stone walls, graveyards. Um, I can't. Waived, okay. Direction of existing surface water drainage across the site. In many cases, waived because it's existing and, and not affected by the proposal, correct?
I think that's why we decided to waive it, yeah.
Okay, ten point four is proposed development activity. Um, not.
Wait a minute, we got JK, JK and Elia to do.
Location of the nearest fire hydrant, dry hydrant or other water supply. Pitcher pond is close by. The location, front view dimensions and lighting of existing and proposed signs. I know you did discuss signs uh in November.
I think we waived that because it was no proposed signs.
Location and dimensions of existing easement and copies of existing covenants or deeds. We did have that. I do know on the proposed side, signs, there was discussion because he'll be putting a small sign down with his existing air wrap farm sign, but it's a small size and the lighting is already present there.
But that's an air at farm sign.
But he's putting the, hopefully putting the gun shop sign on the same stand.
Oh, that wasn't, that, okay, is that something that's gonna be done, that wasn't in the application?
It was discussed when we reviewed it.
Answer was no. Is a sign gonna be added to the air at farm sign reflecting this?
Yep, sorry, in, in November, we originally talked about a sign, but we are not going to add a sign.
I didn't think so, okay.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Jay and Amber. Uh, location and dimensions of any existing easement, easements and copies of existing covenants or deed restrictions. And.
I'll make an assumption because there's none in the packet that there are none.
Correct. Is that right, Amber?
Yes.
Proposed development activity uh should not affect water supply or sewage disposal in any way. Okay, the direction of proposed surface water drainage.
That was waived.
Provisions for handling all solid waste, it's all existing, correct?
That was not waived because we wanted to see it.
You wanted to see it.
Well, it is, I don't know what's being disposed of from a, a facility that's handling ammunition or whatever, but it was something.
Sorry.
Something we wanted submitted because we wanted to review it.
Go ahead.
There is nothing, there's no, nothing, there's, the ammunition comes in packages.
Well, Amber, 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 all we need is the submission so we can review it.
So Jay, you're asking that they just submit something in writing explaining this about the packaging and what will, or will not be wasted?
Everything that's in the submission requirements that we did not waive should be submitted.
But they're saying there's no solid waste.
Yeah, exactly. Nothing solid.
Right, so nothing submitted because there is nothing handled, okay, alright.
To be disposed of, okay. Location and dimension of and materials to be used in construction.
That was waived.
Waived. Proposed landscaping and buffering.
That was waived.
The location, dimensions and ground floor elevations of all proposed buildings and building expansions. There are no new buildings and no new expansions.
But that's shown on the plaits that were presented in the applications package.
Of the existing buildings.
Right.
Yes. Location, front view, materials and dimensions of proposed signs.
That was waived.
Now waived that. Location and type of exterior lighting. That one I still have questions because obviously something has changed since the original.
And we wanted to see that.
Yes. So Amber, go ahead.
Yep, sorry. The exterior lighting was done to the house, not to the, the place it's going to be at.
Okay. Does that satisfy everyone then? That the lighting is not affected? No, no change to the, the commercial site, right?
Yeah.
Okay. The general description of proposed use or activity, we have that. Did I forget, including fire protection system, yeah. Location of all utilities, including fire protection systems.
I'm going to see that.
And did we not have that in the original packet?
It's in the, the, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question again?
Location of all utilities, including fire protection systems.
It's an existing structure.
Mm-hmm. Is there a sprinkler system in that structure or?
No. I believe in the beginning we said there was no fire protection system.
Okay. General description of proposed use or activity, we have an estimate of the peak hour of daily traffic to be generated by the pro, uh, project that was addressed. Stormwater calculations, was that waived?
Change.
No change due to.
It was waived.
Nature. Copies of app, applicable, uh, state approvals and permits provided, however, the board may approve development plans subject to issuance. There was nothing we had to be concerned with, except that specifically wanted, uh, something eventually to come back from the fire marshal.
I believe also Mr. Arman put in his package, the fact that the ATF requires, of course, obviously, he'd be a licensed firearm dealer. And so they were not going to issue, uh, a permit to him to do that until the town of Lincolnville had approved his application for the business.
That's correct.
So the condition of approval have to be that ATF licenses, Mr. Arman, if an approval is given for the site.
Okay. I understand. But I kind of doubt anybody would try to sell arms openly without that ATF license, right?
They better not.
And where was I? Nope, that's it. So ten point five additional for major projects.
This is a minor project.
And we don't have to go there. So that's it. Yours, we have decided that within thirty days, we have to review this, and that's when we will do the standards and criteria for the final review. Eleven, twelve and thirteen.
We need to vote.
Need a clarification. I need a clarification. I need to know if the board is going to schedule for one hour before for a public hearing for the next meeting.
I personally do not believe it's necessary. But that is for all of you to vote on.
I agree.
I don't think that would be necessary. That's going to raise all kinds of opinions and feelings that have nothing to do with the subject.
And they had their opportunity this evening to come and comment.
That's right.
More to the point, that's, that's true, uh, Liz.
I agree.
Jay, what were you about to say?
The facts are the Lincolnville Commercial Site Plan Review Ordinance does not require a public hearing. The point can be made that historically, the Lincolnville Planning Board has had public hearings on a commercial site plan ordinance reviews because of public, uh, input or questions asked of the town office. That seems to be the situation with this one. Um, which is why we brought it up at the last meeting for discussion. Um, the board is perfectly within its right not to have one because it's not a required item. Um, you say that the public has been given an opportunity this evening to comment, that's true, but I was not aware, and I'm a member of the planning board and all of a sudden, but a member of the planning board, uh, because there was nothing on the agenda that said that it was going to be a comment period at this meeting tonight. I think we should try to measure, um, with all you've said, Elizabeth, at the beginning of this meeting, and all I said during the last meeting about what the mission of the planning board is and what the responsibility of the planning board is, that hopefully everybody would understand that they need to read the application because the application is the only thing that the Lincolnville Planning Board is going to be focusing on. And whether or not that application meets the standards of the ordinance. I don't know where this other stuff has come from in the community about the range and, and all this other stuff about out of state people purchasing weapons. I don't know where that all comes from, but people need to understand it's the application that the board is looking at and reviewing. If the board feels there's enough need for public input, uh, to us so that we might learn something that we can, historically, we have scheduled a public hearing.
On the other hand, um, this is, this is an application that has been completely approved before. I mean, uh, everything was done and we're, we're, we're doing the whole thing over again. Um, not really i- i- in order to
Not to appease the public, but to correct a mistake we made with procedure.
We didn't make it, sorry.
Right. It's true.
Um, I would say also to Jeanne's point about section two of the, um, commercial review ordinance. Um, in my opinion, and Frank can correct me here if I'm wrong, but in my opinion, what triggers what we're doing right here is, uh, two point one E, which is the conversion of an existing non-residential use in whole or in part to another non-residential use. Um, we've had that with the motel down on Route One. We've had it with a little building down at the beach. This is pretty much following that same thing that we have a, a site that's operating as an agricultural, commercial site with, uh, a question has come before the board about one building on that site, which is going to be converted from a non-residential use to a non-residential use. So I believe our review is focused on two point one E. To Frank's question about the, uh, public hearing, I think we ought to give him an answer.
All right. I have a motion. Or do we just vote?
Motion.
I would make a motion that we don't need a public hearing.
All of those who agree, we do not need to
Second.
Conduct, oh, a second please. So Jay has seconded that. How many vote that we do not need to, uh, conduct a public meeting in conjunction with this application? Dick has his hand up.
I agree.
We do need to have verbal votes for Nancy. So Dick has said yes. Scott?
Yeah, we don't need it.
Bill?
Yes.
And Jay?
No.
And I vote yes. So you have one, four yeses and one no, Nancy.
We need a motion to vote on the, um, on the submission requirements.
Oh, yes.
That they, they've been met.
I, I move that we vote that the submission requirements have been met and meet the standards that we use for that purpose. And we will move on to another meeting where we will do the final review.
I'll second that.
All who agree, please say so out loud for Nancy.
Yes.
Dick from Yulin, yes.
Uh, Harrison, yes.
Bill Northland, yes.
And Elizabeth says yes. Okay, Amber, it looks like we get to meet you again.
I feel like, uh, my family thinks, who do I talk to on these, every other week?
Well, thank you. Um, I'm sorry for the delays and we hope we'll get it all straightened out next time we meet.
I do have one question really quickly.
Certainly.
Is there any possible way to receive a copy of the minutes, um, from the meeting tonight?
Certainly, um. I'm trying to think how that would work, because we wouldn't actually be approving them. It would only be a draft until two weeks from tonight. At that point, yes, uh, you would, we'd be happy to forward them to you, or you can find them online if they get on promptly.
The public record is the approved minutes, not the draft.
Right.
All right, I'll wait.
And Amber, also you can review this video at any time.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Night.
Okay, so next up is the those are minutes.
Anderson's cottage, Sanderson's cottage.
Where did I put him? Okay. Great. I need page six, you guys. Personal assistant. There we go. Okay, we have a non-conforming shoreland zoning application. This is a review of proposed, um, additions at fifty-six First Avenue on Pitcher Pond, map ten, lot sixteen. The applicant is Richard Sanderson of Lincolnville. He does have standing, uh, have a deed from the Wentworths to the Sandersons and tax records. John Yandell will be presenting, uh, he's a, is he still going to be presenting? Or is he, are these the Sandersons?
If you can hear me, this is Richard Sanderson, uh, I'll be presenting.
Okay, wonderful. Welcome.
Thank you.
We lost the video. Oh. Now we can't see you.
There we are.
Okay, now we're back.
Good evening.
Hi. Uh, do you want to go ahead and make your presentation? Tell us what's going on?
Uh, sure. So, uh, we've had this, uh, small camp for thirty years, um, with a small outhouse out back. And, uh, we're finally in a place to add a bathroom and a bedroom to the side, uh, which will be eight foot by twenty foot. And we have an approved septic in place for that. And we're just asking for approval to move ahead with this project.
Okay. I see on the application, um, you marked demolition and below that you marked where it's renovation, restoration, demolition. You're not going to be demolishing this completely.
No.
Correct? Okay, good.
Please, please don't, Rich.
Yes, do not do that. And, um, let's see, you're not going up in any way. This is all expanding on the footprint only. You're already at two levels and twenty feet high, right?
That, well, we're at eighteen feet high, but, uh, yes, we're not going up.
Okay. And I know Frank has already done the math. And your proposed expansions are within his calculations and recommendations. Do you also, okay, you also have a completed and approved septic installed last year, about a year ago in May, right?
Yes.
Um, it's not marked on the new plat, but I see it on the septic application. And where the privy was on your septic application, now you have on your new plat is the shed, is that correct?
That's right.
It will be a shed, yes.
Okay. Um, and that shed privy was up near the road. The septic is between the camp and the lot line to the left if I'm looking at it from the road.
That's correct.
Okay.
That, um, but, but the actual chambers, uh, for it, it's going to be pumped up toward the road. The, the chambers, there's concrete chambers for the septic up by the road.
Ah, okay.
Away from the pond.
So I guess, um, the board is to be concerned with setbacks. And I also didn't notice anywhere on your plaits where you discuss vegetation or tree removal for your expansions.
There won't be any, uh, any tree removal or vegetation change.
No.
Great.
For the eight feet.
Okay. Members of the board, dive in.
This is probably a very silly question, given four hundred square feet, but has any of the thirty percent been utilized previously and any additions or changes to the existing building?
No, not since it was built in the fifties.
Okay, so you have your full thirty percent.
Um, I think there's one error in the, um, there's sort of a hand-drawn plan for, for this that, uh, came in, uh, after our packages were, were sent out via email. And the, there's, if, if I understand h- th- this layout correctly, there's y- you see the corner, the, the northwest corner of the structures? Isn't there supposed to be, uh, isn't there going to be a deck there in that? In that eight foot by?
Yes, it would be the same by seven feet is what it ends up being. I see what you're saying about a line not being there. Yes.
Okay.
It's just an entry deck.
Is, is this, um, substantial enough to be corrected?
It, it won't, it won't exceed the, the twenty feet. It, it's incorporated.
No, no.
That is part, that is part of the overall that they're showing, the addition that's got that deck in.
It would.
There would be steps leading up to that addition from, from that side.
Right.
That would be, uh, would not be extended past the, the, where you see the screen porch in front.
Uh-huh.
So it, it, it won't be extended beyond the structure as it is.
So you're coming, you're coming in from the east and from the west with a set of stairs up to that screen porch abutting the new addition?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
The, the point is, nothing is going to go any closer to the water.
Nothing's going to go any closer to it.
That's, that's the point, so.
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Concerns? Then I think we need a motion to decide whether or not to approve this application and allow the Sandersons to do their work or not, however you guys are leaning.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve this as it is presented.
They're under twelve C A.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jay. I love all your details for Nancy.
I'll second.
Thank you. And do we have a vote, please? Verbal votes?
Dick, yes.
Scott, yes.
Bill?
Jay, yes.
Thank you. And Elizabeth, yes.
Did, did, did Bill say something?
I'm not sure he's saving. I don't know if he can hear us.
Bill, did you vote?
Did you vote, Bill, please? I still don't know what. Thank you very much.
Sorry, my, my mistake, sorry.
Okay. Well, it's like everything's in order for you guys, and I will sign the application and get it back into the office tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You have a good night. Are we done?
Are you going to do the minutes by twelve?
Oh, the minutes, by twelve, thank you. And I did not see anything that I felt needed to be modified, but I missed things. How about anybody else?
Is there a specific requirement that roll call votes, uh, at, at the end of the minutes, there is a, a, a roll call vote of four yes, one no. Uh, do names need to be attached to those?
Uh, that's a good question, Nancy. No?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
Um, I have to, I have to abstain because I wasn't there.
Yeah, um, on line one thirty, one forty. It says Scott Harrison made a motion to approve the admitted minutes of April twenty eighth, seconded by Vice Chair Delano. Motion passed by a roll call vote of six to nothing.
Oh.
We, we don't have six members, so I don't know how.
No.
We could have done that.
Yeah. Yep.
I assume it was five.
Five zero, yeah.
Five zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Janice was present.
She was.
Yeah. She's the one that voted no.
On the application. The camp application, yes. She voted no.
So there were six voters.
Well.
It'd be, there can't be six voters.
Four yes and one no on the camp application, so that's only five total.
I'm talking.
No, I'm sorry, line.
Oh, on the minutes.
Line 140 was the minutes, not the vote on the uh.
Exactly.
And so that can be six.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as everyone reviewed the the videos and.
So we had six appointed members that night?
Yes, you did.
But even if they're not appointed, can they not vote on the minutes if they were present at that meeting?
Uh I guess that's a fair question, but um how did we get six people appointed to vote?
I don't know.
Bill was not here. Bill was not here.
That's true, he was gone.
If he was there and you had told him he could vote, he could vote on the minutes, but he wasn't, so there isn't seven. There were six people present at the last meeting voting.
Yep. That's the way I remember it.
It says it right in the first page, members, count six of them.
Exactly, now. Uh we have a motion on the floor to accept these minutes or what?
Okay, so the point I think is. Chair Udi uh asked alternate foster to participate in the discussion in the meeting, but his vote would not be required tonight. I would, I assumed that meant.
If I wasn't assigned as a voting member of the board.
Then you can't even vote on the minutes. Okay, then Nancy, if you don't mind changing that to five and zero. And then we approve the minutes with the one alteration. Everybody in favor of that?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry, Nancy. Alright. Good night, everybody, unless anyone has any more questions.
Yeah, yes, before, before we go, could could I ask the board, you know, we we have all of these requirements of for confidentiality and the like and that. That I find at times that gets in the way of learning from experience and in in how how this works and. So i- if 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 you folks could bear with me for just two or three minutes to go back to the um Guns N' Roses application. We. Part of the submission is is a bunch of. Notes, I believe that the applicant prepared based upon. Application um standards. And did we do, did we accept these or did we redo them this evening or?
We used them the first time that we met him back in November.
Okay. So. I see, okay, so so this is the applicant's ver- version of what happened. Of 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 the uh submission.
Of what he was submitting.
And what we have just been doing. Uh what he, what he, wh- what we've been doing is 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 verifying that.
Yes. He was very complete in having read the ordinance and and made the notes.
Bill, um. So maybe I can make a point of clar- maybe I can make a point of clarification for you. The the ordinance requires, the commercial site plan review ordinance requires submission. Of an application to the town office, that would be the CEO. That application is handled at the town office in terms of accepting the application, the payment of the fee of the application. The notification to the town clerk, the police chief, the fire chief, blah blah blah. As well as notification of a butters and and property owners within 500 feet. That application, when that's process has been complete, comes to the planning board as an application on an agenda. On a commercial site plan ordinance, you can have a pre-application meeting. Which is exactly what it says, pre-application. So the planning board can speak to the person who's applying, have a discussion with that person. And the the quote-unquote clock is not running. As to the timeframes allowed in the ordinance, 30 days, 60 days, whatever it is. As soon as the pre-application has been held, meeting has been held. And the application comes from the town offices and put on the agenda of the planning board and the planning board starts to review it, the clock starts. So all the requirements of the planning board then kick in, we have 30 days to review for completeness. We have another 30 days, if it's a minor, to review under the standards for a final vote as outlined in the ordinance. So there's two or three different things that are happening there. Prior to the application, getting to the board and after the application is received by the board. What we just finished tonight was the application process that went through the town office and finally got to the agenda for a planning board meeting. And the planning board, having already had a pre-application meeting with this applicant back in whenever. Took it up as the submission requirements review under that section. Where we reviewed the commission, the submission requirements and determined that everything that we needed to review the application was there. And we can now proceed to review it under the standards for a final vote.
And the pre-application meeting is not necessary in every case for minors.
No, while it's not necessary, it isn't necessary, it's required for a major and not required for a minor, but it can be held. If the applicant wants to talk to the planning board. But the important part about the pre-application is the clock has not started.
Okay.
It's not an official meeting of a review of the application because theoretically, the planning board hasn't received the application yet.
Yes, yeah, we usually have.
Works out that we do, but theoretically, according to the ordinance, we haven't received the application yet. But it's an opportunity for us to speak to the applicant about the pending application. Once that's.
What might be required of them.
Right, once that's over and it comes to the board as a as an application on the agenda and we start to review it, that starts the clock, the review process has begun.
Okay.
Thank, thanks for your patience, everyone.
No, I I appreciate you and um hope that we do get some opportunities to be able to talk like this. Where it's easier to go over some procedure and discuss how to do this more smoothly and educate me.
Bill is absolutely right and I understand his frustration, there's not enough opportunity for planning board members to learn how this all works.
Exactly.
Because it is uh business about you can't talk to each other, you can't email, you can't speak on the phone, you can't talk to somebody else, there's a lot to be learned. And I don't see the learning opportunities for people who raise their hand and say they want to do this, it's.
Right.
Just not there and it's unfortunate.
And I'd really love to get together with you guys and talk about it and.
Well, that's why we used to have workshops.
Right. And we can do that, but your workshops were when you didn't have meetings, right? They were on your regular Wednesdays and we're just kind of booked all summer.
But the whole meeting was talking to each other about the ordinances.
In person, which hopefully we can do again very soon.
You're gonna run into a subdivision application and have to make a decision whether or not to designate it as a as a um. A conserv- conservation subdivision, that's a big deal. I don't think anybody here knows what a conservation subdivision is, so.
Well, you did read the ordinance.
If you read the ordinance, you would know, but it's it's difficult, you have to make that decision whether to do it or not. And what you make the decision based on is very nebulous, so it's worth a discussion and.
I'd like that very much.
Is like reading the telephone book, I mean.
But it's like drinking through a fire hose, is what it is, but uh.
There seems to be so much repetition.
Alright, yeah. But the ordinance is the best guy, if you read the ordinance from A to Z and follow it, it's a no-brainer.
Okay. Somebody's been reading. Okay, everybody, thank you so much, good night.
Good night.
Thank you, David.
Good night, thank you.